I looked Bonnie's because of the agenda there.
I just hope you might even fix it. I was going to move a fast agenda item.
Yes, yeah. Problem solved.
We have been working on it. I figured we had.
Recording will be somewhere? On Facebook page or Instagram?
It'll be on CHCL.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Is this everyone for this evening? Yeah, we'll be, okay. We're going to see anyone, correct? Did you undo it? Does it affect us?
Yes, yeah, that's the only way it gets.
No, I mean, it's not going to affect anything you're doing.
No, no, no. Sorry, everybody. By all means, appreciate every attempt.
Whenever you're ready, guys.
Call this regular council. Call this regular council meeting of the village of Grammeranen to order on June the 8th, 2020 at 7:35 at the Grammeranen Community Center. And for prayer tonight, we'll have Councilor Fitzsimmons.
Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this truly wonderful day. Thank you for being able to be on this island and all the beauty that surrounds us. We do recognize that the troubles that are happening around this world today. We pray your peace upon these different situations. We do pray for your wisdom tonight to be here with us as we go about the business of this island. We pray this in Jesus' name.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's great to be back in our council chambers for our June meeting after meeting on June. COVID-19 is alive and going strong in northern New Brunswick in the Hamilton area. Council encourages residents to take all safety precautions during this pandemic. Let's be overly cautious during shopping, on the ferry, and all other activities. Coastal transport is working very hard to keep passengers safe while traveling on the ferry. The month of May had some bad weather. To me, it's weather that we usually have in April, so we all look forward to better weather. On the agenda tonight is the Wellness Center. If council happens to pass a motion tonight to move forward with the project, it doesn't mean that it will happen. First, there has to be public meetings to find out how the people of Grammeranen feel. You are the people who will decide the fate of the Wellness Center. And we will have some public meetings, whatever amount it takes. We'll be having them out in the gym, out in the rink. And we can handle 50 people at a time, so probably we could have two meetings a night, one starting at 6:30 and another one starting at 7:30, and do it for three or four nights if we have to, to get to inform people and they can tell us how they feel. Council offers their sympathy and prayers to the Tracy and Juliana Green family on the death of their son Nicholas Green in a fire last week. So with that, we will go to a disclosure of conflict of interest.
Mr. Mayor, maybe a private session there is 13-1 with the bursary.
Okay, anything else? Okay, then the adoption of the minutes of May the 4th, 2020.
Mr. Mayor, I would move the adoption of the minutes of May 4th, 2020.
Heard the motion by Councilor Chaney. Do we have a seconder?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Ingersoll. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. That almost sounded like an American television program. Wasn't there one called 2020?
Yes.
Additions to the agenda. I have one here. It goes under 11-1, McMac Fire Safety. SCBA Performance Test. If somebody would make a motion so we could add that. You heard the motion by Councilor Sturgeon. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Morris. Question.
Is there an amount of value on that?
Yes, $1,815.46 from the General Operating Fund. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. The next thing would be the RCMP report, which we don't have any RCMP. Eight is a correspondence. Eight one is a letter of support for Crave Technology to the Canadian Radio, Television, and Communication Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I think I saw that in the package we were to have the other week, but I couldn't see here.
There's two. There was like the extra and then...
I seen it, but I don't know. So the letter stated to whom it may concern since our letter, dated April 27, 2020, supporting the Bell application for funding to bring high-speed internet to Grammeranen. A local company, Crave Technology, has approached council for a letter of support for it. Council Sturgeon, do you want to read that, please?
I don't have it.
Do you have it, Councilor Fitzsimmons?
No, I don't have it either. It was the original. Exactly, but I don't use it anymore.
Hi, Harry. Do you want me to read this?
Yes, go ahead. Excuse me.
I don't need to elaborate how reliable high-speed internet is required to enhance safety and wellbeing in any community, especially in a municipality like Grammeranen. Crave is working hard to bring high-speed internet to the island with no government funding to achieve this goal. Crave saw a need and worked hard to fill the void over this past two years. In that time, Crave has built 21 kilometers of fiber optic infrastructure on Grammeranen. Village Council has been on record over the past few years asking for better access to high-speed internet. However, telecommunications companies let us know in the past that it was not feasible for them to invest in a small market that the Fundy Islands represent. On the contrary, Crave Technologies approached the problem of delivering the service in an economical way and is now online to many households. Village Council has confidence in Crave Technologies. We are more than a satisfied customer of their service. I am eager to, on behalf of Village Council, to support Crave Technologies' application to CRTC to bring fiber optic infrastructure to Fundy Islands. Here is truly Dennis Green, Mayor.
Good letter.
Yeah.
Okay, then. The next was a letter to former Councilor Turner. Dear Jane, Village Council wants to thank you for eight years of dedicated service to the citizens of Grammeranen. Your insight to the many discussions and decisions council has made over this period have impacted to the betterment of the residents of Grammeranen. It is obvious your sole purpose to be on council was the improvement of the quality of life for the residents of Grammeranen. I wish you all the best in the future and thank you for your public service. Dennis Green, Mayor. And there was another one to Mitchell Brown. Dear Mitchell, on behalf of Village Council, the residents of Grammeranen, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for service on Village Council. It is encouraging to see a young person in her public service with the sole purpose to improve the daily life of the residents of Grammeranen. Take care and wish you nothing but success in your future endeavors. You are truly Dennis Green. The next thing was a letter, excuse me, to small carpivores concerning the Woodwards Cove. Margaret Hawkins, area manager. Good day, Ms. Hawkins. The purpose of this correspondence is to bring your attention to the deplorable condition of the Woodwards Cove Wharf located on Grammeranen. The wharf has been unmaintained for several years. As a result, when the blacked wharf, which is served as a barricade for the elements, is now disintegrating into the Bay of funding. With the wharf hanging on a thicket, so to speak, the entire cove and surrounding properties are now jeopardized, facing a various serious threat of erosion from high tides and easterly winds. One storm could easily destroy what is aft of the wharf, exposing the community to the mercy of the bay. Route 776 is in close proximity and would be in immediate danger if the wharf were to collapse, resulting in serious problems for the municipality. Council asks that your office prioritize this matter as urgent and utilize emergency funds to replace the rapidly deteriorating wharf with armor stock. If nothing is done now, the collapse of the wharf will be inevitable. We thank you for your attention to this matter and look forward to hearing from you in the near future. Sincerely, Dennis Green, Mayor, CC, John Williamson, MP. Is there any questions on those letters? And we have a letter from Atlantic, excuse me, Atlantic Charters on the condition of the airport. Dear Honorable Mayor and Council, Atlantic Charters is a local air operator company. It has its base at the Grammeranen Airport, CCN2. Our company has been in operation since 1982 and is one of the oldest commercial air service operators in eastern Canada in the last commercial fixed-wing travel air taxi operation in New Brunswick. Our group specializes in air ambulance passenger survey, cargo and sightseeing, and support of our local tourism. Atlantic Charters is mainly known for ad hoc abilities and has received high praise from industry leaders in air ambulance operators and other types of flying. Atlantic Charters has grown to employ nine full-time employees, two part-time employees, plus our president and accountable executive, Melanie Sonnenberg. Atlantic Charters has service destinations as far as Greenland, Dead Horse, Alaska, Houston, Texas, and everywhere in between. Atlantic Charters would like to bring to the attention of the Grammeranen Council the deteriorating condition of the Grammeranen Airport runway. It is becoming a very significant concern for our company and we are looking for the airport to resurface as soon as possible. It is our opinion that the airport may become unusable in several seasons, which would be disastrous for the medevac operations for the residents of Grammeranen. The runway extension that has been discussed with them will benefit the community in many ways and it might be best to pursue that option as a 3,000 runway is limiting today's standards. If opportunity arise such as scheduled service with by-the-seat price shipment of cargo such as live lobster, medical reputation services, increased tourism opportunities, and corporate travel. However, the most pressing need is resurfacing of the existing strip to ensure continuity of the service to our fellow islanders. Atlantic Charters would like to be able to consider their other aircraft for our operation, but the Kerwin Airport has heavily restricted the choices of airlines. We are also willing to assist in any ways to secure funding for the repaving. Atlantic Charters would welcome meetings with the airport committee for discussions regarding airport operations and suggest a meeting to discuss possibilities. Look forward to your positive response. Sincerely, Paul Sonnenberg, Vice President of Business Operations and Strategic Work. Any comments there?
Peter Sonnenberg.
Peter Sonnenberg, sorry.
No, I mean, I think we should meet on...
Sure.
Couple of problems that we have. Is one with trying to get money for this through this program. Is we had to have a... What's it called? Certification, which we do not have. But we've told them that that's what we're striving towards. The other thing was, is they needed proof that there was a thousand-plus passengers a year that doesn't have to come from Grammeranen itself, but the company itself flies everywhere, like they say. But we asked for numbers, not who they are, where they are, what it costs, or anything at all, but just a head count for our application. And as far as I know, they're not willing to give us any numbers. So as far as going forward to doing the work up there, if we resurfacing or doing the whole thing, we're stopped. Because we've got two major problems right there.
And just to clarify things, this port was certified. But when Billy Daggett was mayor, I don't know what the theme was to be for certification each year. The council of the day when Billy was mayor thought it was too much money, so they canceled it.
Yeah, we were at one time. Two thousand and five, maybe? Not sure.
No, no. It was before 2004.
So you...
Between 2001 and 2004.
Okay.
So there is, say, is paving, the repaving history in one way, but Council Ingersoll could tell you that was another thing that we were trying for, widened and paved.
Yeah.
So for clarification, Councilor Ingersoll, when you... Thousand-plus passengers for a year. Yeah, that makes sense to me. Is Atlantic Charters was let alone to provide that information? Who would be... And also, I mean, I don't care what their numbers are.
No.
I want the powers that be to know that number.
But the head, it's just the head count, which we needed, an official head count that proves that yes, yes, indeed, there is a thousand-plus or whatever. But so you don't need to know who it was, where it poured, how much it cost. It don't need any of that information. It's just a number, a head count for... We couldn't give that to them in order to be have the certification. So they told us at the time that we, at this time, don't qualify. So that's where we're stopped right now with the airport.
Well, the more reason why we got to meet with them, that's the stress line.
Yeah. And as Councilor Ingersoll said, that those passengers didn't have to originate from Grammeranen. They could have been went to St. Stephen and put up some passengers. Cool them, Timbuktu. Their service started at Grammeranen. So the thing is, we'll meet with them, Councilor Ingersoll?
Yeah.
You pick a date.
I'd have to be sometime this week, but I... It doesn't, I guess it really doesn't matter to me what day.
So what's the mayor without the of your board committee or the whole council being there?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
I don't even know who's on it.
You didn't know I did? And Mitchell Brown was.
So we should have someone to replace Mitchell.
That followed here, is this one? It's all right. Followed here, it fell to you.
Okay.
Whether it makes a thing move on, so we get something done.
Okay. So the next thing is Council of Resignation, resignation of Deputy Mayor Robert Moses. Mayor, Council, and staff, Village of Grammeranen. There is a clause in the Municipalities Act that states once a matter has been passed by a majority of council, all councillors must publicly support the decision of the matter. I have often quoted this to other councillors, sometimes before a meeting, sometimes after the meeting, when the matter has been passed. It is somewhat ironic that I now find myself in some of the same predicament. Actually, for some time, I've been coasting on council, riding out this term while deciding what my role might be in the future. It now comes to harvest and this term will last a lot longer than anticipated. So you may wonder where this is hitting, so for, so time for examples. The so-called Wellness Center. I have spoken out in session about the maintenance and operating costs and as yet, I'm not satisfied that the figures we have been presented with will cover the project in the long term. Starting out with figures given, we are looking at a significant increase in the municipal tax rate. All that's going on when our airport is in serious need of repair, almost to the state that is in danger of aberrant relations to operate, we hope. Just think for a bit, if we lose the ability to operate our airport, not only do we lose the business connected to it, what happens to medevac? Another ritual that I have spoken to council and nothing to be done on the matter? Or the current, excuse me, or the current pool, which we most likely can't run this year? What a chance to put some money into a facility that we have so that there was something there when it can be operated. Private roads, there were few in the municipality that have developed them on them and these residents are paying the same tax rate as the rest of us on paved and chipped sealed streets. Oh, yes, that's the same old argument. A village can't take over a private street until it's been brought up to specification. What a forward-looking community we would be if we were able to at least talk with the residents and business on these streets to see if maybe, just maybe, there is some way the municipality could help them improve their access and at the same time make those areas more inviting for development. More houses and business make bigger tax bases. Other sized municipalities have managed to aid business developments through a thing with business parks, housing developments, access roads, and more. Now there is a group of small businesses come to council expecting that the coming summer tourists, in their words, shuttered, very little of any tourist traffic. What does council do? We send, we quote another line of the municipality, no municipal government can give tax relief or grants to a business. Then there's much to tell them to bark up a different tree. No offer of any help, no offer of any conversation on what might be possible. Maybe in their end, there would be nothing we as a municipality can do. But we don't even talk to them or ask what other municipalities might be doing. We will never know. Now there is a line. Council has been begging and bludgeoning Alliance for at least the last eight years for better phone service, better cell service, better internet. And the reply to council has been, no money in it, no business case for that. We don't have the infrastructure to support it, and on and on. Basically, we've been told, no, it's not going to happen. Now, oh, wait, there is a new C cable, but well, not yet connected to anything yet. And then, oh, there is the federal program coming out. And Alliance suddenly sees a big chunk of federal dollars and send a letter to council for support for these big federal dollars. I haven't seen a copy of the proposed project, but their word will do better. Not how soon, how much, better, just better. Council approves the request and staff composes a nice long letter of support. Now, this would be all fine as far as it goes, but wait. Everyone knows there is a local small internet business expanding as fast as they can, started with Wi-Fi and then expanded to fiber connection to the home and businesses, offering speeds that are at least equal to and possibly better. If needed, then Alliance can come up. This internet service has made it possible for many people to live here and work remotely and will make the option of drawing cards to more and more people. People to move to our community, bar property here, carry on business, and more and more people. And life here, all increases our tax base, maybe to the point we'll be able to afford some of the frills we are looking for in indoor pools. Has the councillor staff asked this company if there are any ways they could help support them? Have we given them any public support at all on open council session? Should we ask them to come and beg for support, just betting that won't happen? That brings us to council. Council writes a letter of support to the huge company that has stubbed its nose at Grammeranen in so many ways over the years, then asks the small company that has been virtually ignored by council to beg for a letter of support after it's sued for it to do any good. Hypocritical part of this, perhaps not. Everyone is aware of council chambers. The village office and the community center all supply fiber optic infrastructure by this small local company. Now that I publicly oppose matters passed on council session, I'll step down off my soapbox, please, except this is my resignation from council, effective three hours ago at 001 hours, Tuesday, May the 5th, 2020, with some regrets from Moses. So that was his reason for resigning. He talks about the Wellness Center and the Wellness Center hasn't been a go yet. Private roads in the municipality, the information's brought to them from years ago. So anyway, that's it.
We addressed the local company with our letter? Right?
We had, yes, and we had him, yeah. Oh, I don't know how long ago he's been, logically, but...
Early last, no, give me a second there. Early last fall, there was a dinner presentation. Had a good lunch.
And when we met, Mr. Mayor, we said that anybody who ever need, just let us know. We'll help you out. Anybody, of course, other than financial, of course, but get our support, so.
We would have let her come.
Do we need a motion to accept the resignation? I would so move that we accept the resignation from Deputy Mayor Moses.
You would motion by Councilor Morris. Do we have a seconder?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Fitzsimmons. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We will do another thank you letter to the council.
So you, you want to make that a motion?
That was just a motion, yes.
You heard the motion by Councilor Morris to get a letter out. Seconded by Councilor Sturgeon. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Nomination of a deputy mayor. A new deputy mayor must be elected. It was usually with a new council, there was three ways that you could elect a deputy mayor. One of them was the council with the most votes. And the other one was by nomination. And I'm not quite sure of the third one. So this council, when council first started in the public of Grammeranen, they decided that they would go with a nomination by members of council. So that's the way we have to go tonight. So we're open for nominations for deputy mayor.
So are these seconded or is it just a nomination and then it...
Yes, the nomination is moved and is seconded. Then there is, is there any more nominations?
Right.
It's my understanding, anyway.
Yeah.
Stand to be corrected, so.
Start off with the nomination of Councilor Wayne Sturgeon for deputy mayor.
You heard the motion from Councilor Chaney for Councilor Sturgeon for the position of deputy mayor? Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Councilor Ingersoll. Are there any other nominations? 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 So, I don't quite what the next step is, you are the deputy mayor.
Nomination season.
I think you have to ask him if he accepts a nomination.
Councillor Sturgeon, do you accept the nomination as deputy mayor?
Well, I would totally be honored to be the deputy mayor of Graham and Anne. Thank you.
So.
I would like to thank my fellow councillors to show us confidence when I was thrown over in the seat of the president.
But you should not follow him, we are a point of order.
I kind of thought that this was the way it was going to go for some reason, and I could have believed.
Everybody had a chance to take over the meeting and all they wanted to. Congratulations councillor Sturgeon. Live streaming meetings on Facebook.
So, while we worked in the world of Zoom over the last two months for our council meetings, one of the benefits, I think, that we discovered, or at least I did, is I heard a lot more feedback on what we were doing. I think that our viewership was a lot higher as we were streaming live on Facebook than even people watching on CHC or the videos that are uploaded to our website. So, I approached Pete and having these things, see if it was possible, like what could be equipped in here, if this had that work. I understand staff, they're working on it, but I just wanted to bring it up here to see and make sure it was quick work and to see if there was some way that we would be able to start streaming our meetings on Facebook, for Facebook page. So I don't know if you guys have any updates for us or? They'll call today, there's two options we could do. One is, we can set up a laptop at the back of this room, a little laptop here on it, and we'd all have individual YouTube microphones and feed into that computer and stream on Facebook, Zoom or whatever. The second option, which is what we are going to try to push for, is have a physical camera people here, like we do now, like Pete, and then the computer would be in the CHC room, streaming from there, just so that we have. That goes with the computer.
And have the ZB tours and live streams, same thing.
As a group, not individually. Who needs to, just sourcing out some of the technology that goes with it right now. What we have back there is the wall, which is a little bit digital, so it's like after some days.
Mr. Mayor, I hope you've actually noticed, I've said many a time, a laptop man and a laptop phone. And I didn't know, I heard of livestream, what the level of it was. Didn't know that Zoom existed until this COVID crisis started. But I'm knowing it, and I can be able to, I'll do it. But my taxes is at a home at the time, but anyway, it works out. And this is how we're doing at this evening, is how it's going to be done for a considerable time, so we must make a reasonable attempt to, so that there's public oversight, so we should do as much as we can, soon as we can.
Did Bill happen to have like a cost estimate?
Of which?
Cost? Like ballpark?
At first. Less than $2,000.
Okay.
But that's when the digital. I think the biggest cost would be a computer. And for doing, on the second option, computer would be designed to what you're asking to do, doesn't a whole bunch of other things, it's what it's do. And the person that's looking after it almost would have himself.
Sounds good.
So do you want to make a motion that we proceed that way?
I would make a motion that we proceed with that route. Providing we don't hit any major glitches that are going to drive the cost significantly higher, but.
Is there a motion by councillor Morse, do we have a second there?
I'll second that.
Seconded by councillor Cheney, question?
It was interesting to listen to some of the comments. I don't know if I'm doing, but I have another computer inside, almost saw what was coming in.
Oh, you do that, that looked interesting.
Oh, that was interesting, yeah. Anyway, so we got some, got some interest up here, for sure. It may not, and may not work.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. One other thing, councillor Sturgeon, you're the alternate for the Southwest Municipal Service. So the next thing is legion discussion, information for council. Councillor for sentence, you speak on the legion's behalf.
May I, Mr. Mayor? Just an update on talks we've been having with our legion. As you know, the legion is celebrating the 75th anniversary. They're very active in our community, they raise money for equipment for our hospitals, our fire departments, and of course, they keep a memory of the many women who have served this country, some given their lives and freedom, enjoy the dead, even keep them alive. And with the passing of time, the legion is aging, but actually, membership is up a bit. There are 49 members at the moment, but building they are using is the concern. Parking, no potable water, no rain for subjects' systems, the aging heating system and the need for fire escape are all concerns, has led to talks with the village about the possibility of a legion using the community center as its home. They've come up with a three-step plan that has been accepted by NV Command and has been voted on unanimously on the side by the legion at the last meeting, and is now bringing it to the village tonight for approval. Step one, which has actually been taking place for a while, is if the legion would use this, this room for their meetings, hold them here at the community center. Step two would be the approval, with the approval of council, they would like to bring some of, some of their artifacts in, they would like to display them on the walls outside in the hallways. And step three would be the sale of their building, that's down the roadways, and I'm glad there'd be a few issues about space for their stock, just, you know, things we can work out as we go along, but they would, they would need a little bit of space. So, they would actually like to help us make a motion tonight, so that they can continue with us. So I'd like to make a motion that we open up the community center, the village here for our legion to use.
I'll second on this. You heard a motion by councillor for sentence, seconded by councillor Sturgeon, Deputy Mayor Sturgeon. Question?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, there's 49, 49 members.
Yep.
They all, I've heard everything, but you have executives, would it be a meeting here for 49 members or just executives or?
Well, right now, it's sunny right now, it's a little different than.
Sure.
I mean, just, as we're, they're going to have to go with this kind of arrangement right now, but they have been holding meetings here for some time now, 20 years anyway.
It's been a little while, I don't know the time.
Oh, it's weird.
Yep, so it's worked out good for one, and I think, I think it'd be great to have them here.
As far as members who show up or whoever, it's.
Yeah, probably, no doubt.
And the stores, I suppose, that's where the banners they have.
That's the big thing, yeah.
Yeah.
But the games, I'm sure you can work something out there.
We typically like to have the flag in the air and stuff like that, anyway.
Oh, I didn't think that, yeah, remember earlier, it was great, the ones with, the only thing for stores now, they don't say here.
Well, we don't have much for stores now. I mean, those banners are all up, on the second floor. Put away, and you know, you got a burn up north here, and we could build a sparring or something, and, I mean, there's different things you can do.
NV Command, when they learned of this possibility, they were quite excited, there's no place than, than the country.
This would be the only point, see, I have a relationship between the village council or river council and the village.
Every day, you didn't pay for it, did you?
Yeah, no, they, no, there are anyways, you know, that.
But with no washroom and fire stage, like I say, and parking, I know that you can't have a parking lot, possibly, and things like that, because it's congestion. We got lots of room here.
Yeah.
Any other question?
I do have a question. Wonder if their bingo games, not that I'm opposed to them having a bingo game and all that, but.
The bingo is, I was told is a.
Okay.
Something that they, it's not a league.
Yeah.
And there's opportunities that they partner with Colonel Ray or something like that.
I didn't know that, of course, COVID's stuck down a lot of things.
Well, yeah.
I just, I just think that they can't be going to the regulars that they like, that was going to be.
Pretty much. I, I believe it's much so.
So, you have a question? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. I don't think we have to tell anybody who we vote that the region does. Graduation ceremony, councillor for sentence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very exciting bookcase. On Wednesday, June 17, at 1:00, village Graham and Anne will be hosting the 2020 graduation ceremony, that should be held over here in the bargain mall. But unfortunately, the way things are nowadays, we restrict it to 50 vehicles only. So, that means invitation only, we can't, we can't have the public coming into it, which is a big drawback, but it's the only thing we can really do, so the kids will be given. Two, each student will have two dozen needed parking spots. And we go from there, it's not going to be insane, but it's, it's something that recognize them, it should be good. But, if anybody would come on Facebook, you would know that there is a little bit of good news, and some may, that everyone can participate, and that would be what used to be called the grand march, but now may be better known as the grand tour this year, because it's posted on Facebook, the graduates of 2020 would like to invite family, friends and all the community to come to their very unique drive-along grand march parade at the Angler's Park, June 15. You order a parking of vehicles and you guide it around the area where the graduates and the dates were dressed to the nose. They say, please come with the city, let's meet a group of young kids at their VR guest themed event. Here's a book with me and so much to learn, it'd be a fun evening for all. The main date would be June 19. And after that, they're actually planning on going out to the medicine room to do a walk around, take a, and then they'll be able to do the pictures, so, you know, it's, it's all something. Should be good. And that is for everyone.
It's good to see that they're doing something, they're going to have some sort of recognition.
Oh, for sure.
But certainly, a month ago, it didn't seem like it was going to be anything.
A month ago, while we thought they was going to be, they was drive up to the school and, and have the picture taken, take the view. So this is, this is.
So for graduation, you need to find somebody with really good vehicles, is what you're saying?
You can shove them in the trunk, you could do anything.
That's right.
So, what about your granny, have you been told about this, she could rent his bargain mall across the road?
Granny, I told her, but it was for using some of his equipment.
So, one, one thing, a friend of mine was telling me that his daughter had graduated from university this year, and there's no graduation for them. And he said, what do you think of it? Well, she said, I'm not happy that we can't have a graduation, but the ones I'm thinking of is the high school students, who would have gone there for 12 years. Them not having theirs is a lot worse than me not having one. I thought that was pretty nice.
But as you, as you mentioned with Granny, I just wanted to say that we're going to have the sides of the roads blocked off, they won't be able to come and park because of the fire heads and all that sort of stuff, so it won't be able to come and park alongside the road.
Okay. And I had, I had talked to Granny, I think it was today, on the broken line that's over here, it didn't get painted solid this year because the pre-American crew had not been in. I talked to the guy that was doing it and I asked him if he could. He said, I could, but if I happened to do it and there was an accident, boys, I would be in hardship. So I just talked to him, you know, it's, we haven't had word back yet whether it's been approved or not, but it will be done this time.
About time it did, yeah, as long as they have a thing with the road.
So the next thing is the Castleville ball iron, councillor Cheney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On May 29, during the afternoon, project director Chris, myself and representative from, did a, a view, walk around of, of the, of the erosion. It's interesting because we could see the, the groundwork, which is putting when they had twine in the, in the pole slot over the center field. And then so, they went with the guys who went through the twine and broken iron and trying to get it to fly off. But if you can look, next time you go by, from home plate, over the pitcher's mound, second base, right up the other field, there is a clump of albers, and from those albers up to the playground, and maybe just a little bit more of the road, because the playground is north end, that would be the area which needs the attention. The area from center field bushes over to the, down at the shore, like on Island and Bachelor, it's seen broken up by liches and that side which could stop the erosion somewhat. So we discussed that, tiny area could be done, there's a soft spot there, we had to, the ground would have to be well baked, or frozen, but probably getting it baked, because it risks a storm in November. So I'd like to work with the CIO and come up with a, a plan, certainly the amount that would have been an invitation or tender, and the plan of, of the area and the material which we should put in there. So that's, that's my update. And, once again, I don't know if we have more budget line to come from, but any of our opinions may not be accepted, if we feel we can't go through, but I think at least we should have a plan in action of, of how we're going to proceed with the riprap in the infield, so.
I think instead of talking riprap, we should be talking armor stone.
Excuse me, you're right, armor stone.
So any questions?
Just one question, Mr. Mayor, are armor stones still available on the island? I hope that it's, we had to do a thorough process.
As, and I discussed, it was.
Okay. Yeah, they're coming across a lot, and there's places that you can blast and get it.
Some, but it was suggested that you could even do it.
You're going down to the.
Well, I'm not fully going to stick down, but maybe some machine that I can, can lift that.
So it's, yeah.
So if that's all right with council, I'd like to see it, presumably, if Chris can attest, it, it didn't all burn.
There's certainly places that 15 to 20 feet was, was gone last year.
There's one that used to hit those balls over the fence, and you said you'd use your equipment.
Yeah, I can vouch for that. But a lot of that work was done under a main course project.
Okay.
Interesting to see that grid work, which is, it's not high, it's at the base level of the sand now there.
Well, it's about two hundred feet from that point where that bushes to the fat side of the playground, which is the worst that's already. Some places it's eight, nine feet high and each up to the top of the bank.
Correct.
But from the playgrounds going north still towards the upper edge of our property, it shovels up a lot, like to a couple feet, and you can see it's, so the first two hundred feet is going to be expensive. That last hundred feet that we married off there would be significantly less.
Any guess, the method we're talking about here? We would have to take and talk about that in post-session, Dickie Mayor. Okay, thank you. We have an idea. Okay.
So, do you have all the information you need from the Council of Cheney? Okay, it's best that you people are getting together with the C A O.
Yeah.
An airport request, request permission to discharge a firearm.
Yeah, Paul from United Chartered phone a week ago. I'm not aware that he's having, apparently he's having trouble with birds. And he wants to scare them with a discharge of a firearm. For him to do that, the owner of the air zone or the airport has to give permission for him to do that. He's not within stipulations for discharging firearms, and the residents is ready on that. If it is migratory birds, you have to give a permit on the products or the federal because it's migratory birds. One of the regulations says that you cannot discharge a firearm to scare migratory birds unless you have a permit. So, for him to first do that, for Paul or United Chartered to even to do that, he has to get permission from the council that he can discharge a firearm at the airport. That's his request.
Now, with the discharges, are they able to have these compounds?
Yeah.
So, they're compliant, so they just make it sound like a shotgun, wouldn't that be more sturdy and shootable?
The blueberry crab, I think, I don't know who it is, but there's a place over in St. George who used to build the fire then. I think it's the same kind of guy we're talking about. And it's loud. I've heard.
They're big, they're complex.
They'd be loud.
I think it's a bird or...
Yeah, so that maybe something too, they may want to...
Probably not wanting to leave over there either, just to scare.
Any motion for counsel?
I'm going to motion that. For any further... Well, but we ask, we give the permission to fire a firearm, but we also, if he wants to get a, if it's scary, you do that, it would be one or the other.
Rather than going insane that you could use a firearm, just state that you can discharge it wherever you want.
He's combined zone, so... Well, you could be asking if there was an option, sure.
I'm going to motion for the fact that we refer to the use of air, and I think that's not possible. So, you could permission to discharge firearm.
Any motion, Dickie Mayor? Sturgeon, do we have a second here?
I have a second.
Seconded by Councilor Cheney. Question? All who's in favor? Opposed. Motion carried. Five-year priority wish for improvements to provincially designated holidays. Wish for twenty-one to twenty-five. We haven't had anything happen. What we are hoping, rather than to see it broke down, it has to be broke down in a yearly thing. But what we're hoping is when Route seven-seven-six and Eagle's Head is done, everything will be done. This is what's being promoted. And that way, they don't have to be back in here, you only have to move all of your equipment once, and the asphalt plant will be in here, it's just a one-time deal. But they want them to break down, and what you're going to do every year. And this is all we've been doing, is changing the years on it, because we're beginning nothing now. So, you know, the work is like, widening, blocking, inviting pass, reviewed on Eagle's Head for twenty-twenty-one. And Route seven-seven-six complete shoulder widened with blocking and inviting passes and repaved. And the Deepwater Bridge has been out for replacement for nineteen ninety, I suppose. But with the replacement on the Deepwater Bridge winds up being, it would have to be some landage work needed to get what they want to do. All buildings and D T I main streets, area resealed, that's a fifty-fifty cost. Now, the corner of the street, let's just take that a little bit of a curve. Third floor is covered. Roads, Monas seventeen, it's storing drainage in Bushing, and eighteen to thirty-six is twenty-twenty-four drainage in Bushing, and twenty-twenty-five to thirty-seven to fifty-six. We done some drainage one time, and then followed it in each other. The gullible drainage should give room for backing. I would say, my opinion, it just leave it the way it is and send it in. Both of them can twist around and not just get Route seven-seven-six and Eagle's Head down.
Beginning to see maybe it's a risk to withstand. Is there anything else we can do, or possible number?
Not really, and as far as Bushing, I could make a recommendation on Bushing, it being done with an excavator. Because my god, my four guys would never get Route seven-seven-six and Eagle's Head pushed to go back to the right of it. So, if they come in and cut it down, the whole thing, you'd be able to keep up with it then. But you can't, in a way, you can keep up with it now. You do say Bushing or pushing?
Yeah.
Pushing, would you need to...
I said pushing. I wonder if there's anything we need to do, or sort of, instead of just send this in and then come somewhere and chat? I don't know, I'm just wondering.
The whole process has changed from what it used to be. And I don't dare get into it.
Uh, anyone who's here, pre-COVID, so January, I'm thinking of having a meeting with her, and she indicated she wanted to come back a couple times to be with us, which of course hasn't been possible. But maybe this is something we could invite her to come over and have a chat with the next time she's able to travel, because I think it's worth having another conversation, so.
Definitely.
I don't think I should worry about it.
Okay.
Is there any... I don't think he's afraid that I hear. I see there's a lot of flack on Wayde, not, for example, not being able to get it done. Who paid for it? No, I haven't been going to pay for Wayde, and we had bad enough to have to pay for it. She thinks it is out there. So, when the guy was here, before he even came, I asked him, I said, is Wayde going to be done this year? He said, I've talked to the guy that's responsible for putting the roads, the lines on the road. Left him a message, also that I'm going to Grandman Anne in two weeks, and I mustn't help before I get there, whether to do it. He said, I can never get back to me, so I'm not going. He didn't want to be a good neighbor. He gets you. You have destroyed one truck trying to get off of there. And you start running there one day. And he's not going to be able to develop a contractor. And the reason that we got a private contractor, if we waited for the problems to do it, it would be September or October for it's done, and we run the fog belt, and we want it done in the summertime. All right, well, you're real good. Too, are you a little bit? Yep. Yeah, probably. Everyone's been good to us anyway. But the guy, what's the line on the road, has been great to us.
Oh, yeah. Ready to hear it?
He's going to be here. Does it... Two babies, it's gone.
That line is so along the edge of the pavement, the white line is not supposed to be there. They don't put it unless there's a meter of pavement outside. And all we do have is... Put it in. You're ready to put it in? So, what do you want to do, both of you? Put it in that way and just... That is it?
Yeah.
I think it makes sense to do it that way, because while we've done it, the only thing I don't mind with, is that because the cost is so high to do it all over the seven-seven-six and the secondary control one year, is that what's hampered it versus having it spread out and phased over two, three, or four years? And I know the modern cost of it, of the time you do it, but sometimes that's why we start doing, we're looking at however many million dollars it is in one year versus funding it all over.
Well, they're going to go and do it just for two years.
Yeah, but it's...
What you see is, when they start resetting, doing, not the court, Councilor Cheney's, when they start replacing that code, something that are under the road, then you'll say, hey, it's going to happen, whoever you start seeing is, but there's a lot of prep work to do. I know we are getting a more serious lot from them now than we had been getting. The roads are in high shape, they're well-run. I wanted zones, they took a slippery one wet, and they said, we've been admitting something's wrong. I said, you're going to be admitting it because it is. So, which one do you want to go on that?
Seems to be after all, he has a party.
Yeah, he did, yeah. They tried to order these, but they're just not getting them done. So, they're going to go to... I'm going to hear, please.
I mean, they sent the manager, I got that information, and he was in fact... Do you have a motion, Dickie? Yes.
So, you have a motion for Councilor Cheney to obstruct?
Consider.
Take it by Councilor, I'm sorry for question. All who's in favor? I oppose. The vote was motion carried. The wellness center discussion, uh, Councilor Fitzsimmons, myself, our direct director, Ms. Robber? Yes. Just had some discussion on it, so, uh, Councilor Fitzsimmons, or, you got it, come on.
Mr. Mayor, council's been informed of the application for wellness center, it should actually be designated heavy. And tonight, all we wanted to do is have a discussion, if the county of council wants to keep this on the table or not. So, if we want to keep the application on the table, or do we want to drop it off the border? There's no money, there's no, nothing to be discussed there, but it's just, do you want to keep it on the table for consideration?
I think what should be added is, if council decides that they want to keep it there for consideration, that doesn't mean that it should go. What it means is we've got to have some public meetings, right?
If the application was ever accepted, then you have to go to the public. Like you said, in the open, you have to go for two, three nights or whatever, different towns, get the public in line, because I mean, it's a different world again, and I'm not very sure what the public's opinion would be, so, but that, if we're just doing that again, I mean...
Well, one thing, Mr. Mayor, is COVID services, that everything is virtually possible, credit upon self, and, so, what I understand, you can do surveys, electronic data, survey mapping, I don't know how it works, but I do, I'm, on ahead, participate in some surveys, that are supposed to be secure, it's supposed to be known and done, not the same person blowing nine hundred five, so, also, as well, what we could do as well, is that we could send out, if we have that report, we'll send it forward, and so, that's all, this is the information, this is what your options, how do you feel? And we've had some good responses, and we've been good in talking about public opinion, I believe, not all the time, certainly most of the time.
There's many different things, if there's any we want to do, I mean, domestic, which is, we're joined in the opinion of the public. My last thing, I know, and tonight, that's all we sort of wanted to do is...
But I, myself, I was, uh, I've been involved in a lot of meetings with F C M, and U N B, and, you know, different, talking to different government people and such. And I would tell you, the feeling I'm getting very strongly, is that the government is very anxious to kickstart the economy and getting things going again. I mean, the honest, fifteen weeks ago, before we passed our pandemic, wasn't even on the radar, and dang, it was there. And the key word is, they look for travel, ready projects, and I would not be surprised if we got word very quickly, and because of that, I would like for us to see public input as quickly as possible.
But we're waiting until that, there's not much sense in going to the public right now.
I think we have the information out there. Uh, my...
Mr. Mayor, do you have a question, which comes from, it's from the... I think we should have a grand's carry, a load from the wall. Okay, we got, we have an issue, we go, do that. Don't worry about keeping it on the table, and then go the next step, and there's no reason to take it away.
And I think there's some creative ways that maybe we can talk about how to get the information out. I think that meetings are probably the most traditional, with the handout, that sort of thing. But when you look at some of the feedback that we've had from our Facebook council meetings, maybe do something like a webinar, or you go through and answer some of the questions even ahead of the meeting, so that the information is out there, because sometimes we begin a meeting, and all we got are things that you're hearing, but we go first, and some people retain information that are hearing it versus reading it on a piece of paper.
Sure.
And I think we're in a large world of technologies and technology differently now because we have to, so maybe we need to talk about different ways we can do some of those things. And we had talked about different meetings, just as the COVID crisis was starting, as we were going into the lockdown. So, now that we're sort of released, maybe it is time to go back and revisit.
Yep. Well, I for one, don't want to be a stick in the mud, but I cannot in good conscience support it, period. We've got a new quarter out there that we've been talking about long, for ages. This wellness center is going to take a lot of that various money. Yeah, the easy part of it is getting money, but you've got to keep that going every year. You've got many, many, that's what employees you're going to have to hire. There's a lot of money in that every year. You've got to get for it for a living. If something happens and we can't get a cent for any of these programs, what are we going to do? Are we going to shutter the port down? Or the program around the village has got to borrow a lot of money to get that runway built, so we can do it. And I, personally, I just think that our power... And I, personally, I just think that our priorities right now with this council are way backwards. We've got things like the cash day of ball gathering that needs to be done. We've got a lot of things that need to be upkeep and brought up to date. We've got an airport up there, but here we are talking about brand new big Wellness Center, government knows what it's really gonna cost us to run that. And I, I'd like to say, their report gets some attention and some money, but if we can't get it, then, then we've got two choices as a council, or who better the next council is. Do we shut it down because of safety and we have to? Or are we gonna borrow millions of dollars to put the airport back so we have our lifeline and our medal back?
But, but, because.
To me, those are, and right now, I cannot in good conscience vote to go ahead.
We've got, we've got two planes in with, with the federal government, but, uh, there's nothing, it's not a, basically that situation, sorry. Those two, those two, uh, projects for the airport, the fundings, there's, there's two different levels, sorry.
There are the address of one, now there's not two different levels of funding, where the theory is, uh, replace what's there now.
Or expand.
And, and I have the, the other part is to have the expansion on it, but you can't even get a note for the one. Because we're not, we don't have, we're not certified and we can't get any numbers from anybody proving that we have those numbers. So we were pretty much rejected for now. So when the day comes, if that report is gonna be fixed and if there's no money to pursue any program, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna shut it down? Or are we gonna go and borrow names and fix our report?
What is, what is the estimate for the fresh, like the, without the expansion? What is the number five, you know? You remember?
No, I don't, we don't.
Like I would, I would, I would help.
That's irrelevant.
Help get the Wellness Center over the year.
That is irrelevant, whether, how much it was for one or whoever. You're talking million, if that asks, whether it's somebody.
Is that something we can do?
I don't know.
Can we borrow that money? I mean, is that even possible?
Is it possible to borrow that kind of money?
Not really. And you would probably go into, uh, to gas tax money between now and the next five years is about eight hundred thousand dollars in that. That's either the village ground and then.
So it was down to four million dollars?
Pardon me?
You said eight hundred thousand dollars a year?
I don't know. Eight hundred thousand total over the next, over the next four, four years, we're gonna book two hundred thousand dollars a year from gas tax, which is into our account.
Mr. Mayor.
And then you can't, then you can't go to the, uh, other federal, which is better dipping, that's what we've been fighting from, from the start.
Yep.
Was, uh, wanting to get into a code, uh, program, the feds would pay, back then, I think it was on forty percent. But, and, and then the province put in their money, then it was the gas tax money for our, for the village ground and contribution to the project. But, that's still a dip, dipping, and then that was it. And that was the end of the competition. When we've been trying, the mayor, the council is for probably six years now, trying to say it's out of money.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, nobody else can use it. Why can't we use, what is therefore is for infrastructure? And we've got no satisfactory answer from, we need to go, the federal, um, provincial person, people say, oh, that's, that's the rules, I gotta go do that. So they put, put it in the road and then you do the auto admin, they say, that's the rules, and then they'll change. So just move on and around.
Anyway, that's just my opinion about.
The county, we told, I mean, what council, it seems that it's negligible if we just wanna keep our name on that project and keep that Wellness Center project alive at this point.
To me, I don't, I don't see where it runs out, so where we have to choose one or the other. I mean, I, I don't see where, where, I support that or don't have a problem with it. But I don't see where, if we, if we just keep this on the table and everything, and I mean, I don't see where that takes away from it.
Well, I'm saying, if you keep it on the table, you're, you're gonna push it, you're gonna, you're gonna do it.
Well, I don't, that's a problem, I mean, I'd be, I, I'm not gonna do it.
If anybody's gonna do it, it's gonna be with the concern of the arm.
Mr. Mayor, I'll tell you, yeah, I won't vote for it if we don't go and get that concern.
Thank you, I, we'll have to be contacted.
Thank you, Kelsey, I appreciate that. But this is more, much more than recreation. I can see where we see this recreation, because, yes, but even, uh, what we mean with, uh, with our own ally, it was also happened to me in the ministry of ABC, by the way. And she was an appropriate example, she said, you know, that a small community, smaller than one community, needs a recreation center to attract health professionals to their area, that's everybody's important as anybody else's project. And, you know, you talk to, are you sure, I guess she should retire now, I guess, but there's, there's a new person, but anybody's responsible for thirty dollars. They go to the hospital, next thing you wanna see is, we're gonna go out to our family. Okay? Because if the kids ain't happy, guess what? They ain't gonna work. Now, everyone tells us also, we have a dentist that's gonna retire, so that's a life professional we're gonna need to find, okay? And I'm not announcing a case for Glenn, but Glenn's not exactly a kid either, for a pharmacist. So down the road, this is gonna be something that's gonna need to be addressed as well. So there's very necessary professionals, and this is one of those things that we need to attract people, because listen, we're talking about very, 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 very field here.
But I, I agree with it, and I wanna agree with Matt, but I do, possibly the airport typically, trying to get some, you know, man.
I'm not, you're my, uh, Councilor Fitzsimmons, I think, I don't see where we're choosing one over the other, I really don't. And I really respect Councilor Anderson's concerns, I know as well.
It's not choosing one over the other. It's like you said, the easiest part of this is getting the money. It's after the fact. It's keeping it going, it's raising the taxes, it's more, more municipal jobs that's gonna be made to keep this running. You're looking at full-time, uh, lifeguards, you're not gonna get them for nothing. It's the cost, is what I'm saying.
I know, I've heard that's gonna be.
If you put one over the other, it's increasing their taxes on the people. Not everybody can afford their taxes, and they will go sky hard, they have to.
It's, no, they have to.
You'll say, they, because you still got upkeep on the airport and it will double.
And I'm.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, but I totally disagree. Anybody sitting here tonight that doesn't think that the taxes would be increased at considerable amount with two of them projects on the go, or, or not on the go, but maintaining them, then I'm sorry that I, I can't see where you're coming from, if you don't think taxes are gonna work.
That's my assault, but anybody that's gonna raise the tax rate, nobody would. But what happened, and even on a hun, uh, two hundred thousand assessment, that's a hundred dollars. That's a hundred bucks, and if you didn't get my point, a hundred dollars is a hundred dollars.
That's right, that's two days, it's hit.
But if we, if we lose, if somebody has to go away for a doctor's appointment, or a dentist's appointment, or, or, or even concerning healthcare, you're gonna pay much more than that in just one trip. So, you know, there's a term that says paying rise and down to the, this could be four, five months, I don't know. What do you want?
I just did today a vote for dentist appointment because our dentist is retiring in July.
Exactly.
And I, I guess where I'm sitting is, we're looking at, we just want to keep the Wellness Project basically in the hopper as a potential project. We still have to go over the public, there's no guarantees that we're going forward. We sat down here, January, February, and we spent an evening going over the operating numbers.
That's right.
I, I share some of Councilor Anderson's concerns about the operation numbers, which I said that night, but I think we're getting close to what is a reasonable amount to expect for the operation and what that would translate out to an increase in taxes. I don't have it right in front of me, but I do think that we've got that near and down, at least for the Wellness Center, what that would be. But I think the other reality is, particularly where the funding comes, it's not necessarily that you have to choose between the airport or the Wellness Center. A lot of times, they're targeted towards one thing versus the other. And in my mind, having two projects that are both trouble ready and ready to go, it just puts us in a better position to maybe get one, maybe get both. And I think maybe we need to talk about, you know, the operating costs at the airport if we're doing the expansion. I think we need to have a look at what they are so that we do know what we are talking about, what we're going with that, because I think we need to have the same level certainly, because both are really important, I think, to the community.
I get asked that question. And it'd be interesting to know what, what would cost to maintain that?
So maybe we do another meeting sometime and talk about what the cost of that is, just so we have those numbers for comparison.
Yeah, the airport.
The airport, yeah.
That's right. So, the extension, Councilor Anderson, was that seventeen million?
With the extension.
Yeah. You took the name, pared it down by a million, is that what I was thinking?
Yes, seriously, there is, there was more like fifteen point four or five.
We put in the law, like, a more thirteen.
Yep. Yeah, originally it was seventeen, I mean, you can get it, it dropped.
So we can move along, and I think, are you gonna make a motion, Councilor Fitzsimmons, that we keep that project?
Let me keep, keep the, uh, project on the, yes, I'll make that motion.
You heard the motion by Councilor Fitzsimmons, do we have a second?
I'll say that.
Say it, but Councilor Cheney, question. All this is, is to keep it in the hopper. It doesn't say we're going to be doing it, right?
Yes. We're gonna try to do as much as, for the, the public, you know, basically.
So, again, it's gonna be the public, if this goes down the line, it's going to be the public that decides this, not us, the Councilor. Also, we've got to put more of a concentrated effort onto at least the repairs to the airport. This is, this is kinda late.
Absolutely.
We'll have a meeting, whatever. Question. Always in favor?
Uh, opposed.
No.
Motion carried to keep it in the hopper. So, Recreation Directors Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of my report to me is basically just to get everybody to be updated on where we are. As you all know, the gentleman's worked the last few weeks with, with the COVID, it's certainly been, uh, been challenging for the people of the road, or, or sort of the recreation sectors have, have taken the biggest hit. So slowly we are getting things opened up, but it's, it seems that as fast as we get things opened up, uh, the government changes their minds and they have to go back through and redo our plans and repost our signs, which is an all of the rolling door. The biggest thing is, is that every facility that we open all have to have the operational plan in place before we can safely operate it. And it was made very clear that if any facility that you own that you don't think you can operate safely or, or meet the guidelines, don't do it. So as of right now, uh, for the tennis event before this, when the first thing to bear would all go into tennis court with Pepperball, very little changes have come to that, other than the last Friday with the announcement of moving to the second phase of yellow, which all that basically does is allow some more people, now allows us to have a maximum fifty users in that facility, which is an increase from ten. The weather has been a bit of a challenge for Pepperball, and there has been some inquiries about if or when they may be able to move back in, sorry. But as of right now, we've told them that, uh, that's not an option until at least September. The main thing is, is we're giving all the emphasis for this facility out in the village office, the Board and Girls Club. The big thing is that they use the gym, the gym will have to be cleaned, disinfected to prove each user. So when the club is done, it had to be cleaned, disinfected, and before the Pepperball come in, and if the Pepperball is done, it had to be cleaned, disinfected before the Board and Girls Club can use it the next day. It's, it's just not working at this time. So we basically told them no for now, let's get the summer through and, uh, let the Board and Girls Club get their numbers and get open, get situated, and reevaluate it in, in September. The Cash Day Playground was the next thing to open, basically because at that point, the playgrounds, the recommendation from the province was that playgrounds were open, they had to be disinfected twice daily. The Cash Day Playground was the only playground that we thought at that time was one that we could maintain the requirements to open it. Because we're having trouble getting supplies and the resources to, to meet those requirements, so we focused on the Cash Day Playground, got that open, got all the slums, got all the hands sanitizers, going in twice a day with the jab, ex bleached, to disinfect, wait fifteen minutes from after we bleach it before we leave, make sure no one comes along, we can send it before it has a chance to dry or disinfect. But since then, the government has grown and told us that they no longer feel it's important to disinfect the playgrounds. Our, uh, FRPA group, which is, is a group of the recreation partners from St. Stephen and Sussex, we met last Thursday during the Zoom meeting, and this came up as a conversation, and we had quite a long conversation about it. And everybody had the same opinion, is that, uh, Councilor Cheney may take the great kids there and he may come with hump hand sanitizer, mask, lifestyle lifts, every little thing bottle that he needs and be wiping down himself, his kids, whatever the kids there. Councilor Fitzsimmons may come behind him and not have anything with him, kids sneezing and coughing all over everything. Everyone felt, in order to operate that safely, they would still maintain some type of regular disinfection, even though the province isn't mandating anymore. So what most of them have done is it's gone back on the frequency to once a day. We've still been doing Cash Day twice a day, uh, we still haven't opened North End or Grand Harbor Park yet. I was waiting until this meeting tonight because I wanted, I wanted opinions on what everyone felt comfortable with before we opened. I've got the science, I mean, the science actually say that the equipment is not being disinfected. So, before I put them up, I just basically wanted to get the opinion of people sitting around the table on what they thought. Obviously, it's, it's a lot more time consuming to go around the playgrounds to disinfect, a lot of the contact time, et cetera, but. The ball field in Grand Harbor has a blast fighting, the government gave us the green light to operate team sports. The biggest thing, what I mean, when I'm talking to user groups, is for anyone who can use the facility, you have to have the operational plan in place, as, as a must. So I sat down with the softball league last week, right here, and do an over seven-page document on the line, and we graphed and come up with what they now have as their, uh, Grand Manam Co-softball League COVID operational plan. We have a copy of that here on file, they also have a copy themselves, uh, and actually laminated a copy of that plan, stuck it on both of those, in the ball field. The biggest thing for those plans is trying to, uh, improve how you're gonna build your social distancing. It was a challenge. It wasn't a challenge. Uh, the rec crew and myself today, finally get the ball field up and running, four or five, and they're actually playing tonight at six. They had to get everything in place, they had to get, the size of the dugout looked like, uh, look at your fridge at home, a classroom with kid pitchers. It's got more COVID signs and rules and regulations, and we went around because, uh, one of the things was, if, if they used the dugout or the bleachers, they were gonna be responsible for disinfecting after they used, to make sure that it was disinfected before, unless they marked baseball, you said tomorrow. That wasn't something that they felt comfortable with, and they didn't feel that they wanted to take that responsibility on, so they decided to not use the dugout or the bleachers. They've told their, their members that everybody bring their own foldable camping chair. Uh, the rec staff went around today, had a two-foot table member marking all the way around the fence with white paint, six feet. And right now, each team has eighteen people on, so there's thirty-six people show up and play the game, so that gives a lot of room to get thirty-six people six feet apart. It's a, it's a challenge. But, one of the biggest things, uh, I talked to CEO and fear from both this beforehand, and also talked to Deputy Mayor Sturgeon. One of the words from Campbellton is the importance of being able to contact trace. If anything ever allows, in that situation, like they had to go back to say, okay, this person contracted where they've been. So we have made it mandatory that all of the user groups using those facilities are responsible for keeping the law. They have to keep track of everyone that comes into that facility. So tonight, with baseball starting up, it's, it was kind of easy for them in the line, because they have a scorebook, and all their watchers will listen to the scorebook. And it was just a matter of saying, Councilor Simmons, if you play tonight, should we bring anyone with you? Yep, okay, jot it down on the bottom of your book. And your spouse, kind of your kids, anything like that, so they're responsible, and keeping track of that, uh, mostly for contact tracing, but we're also still being able to limit it to a maximum number of fifty people. That created a little bit of an issue for them, because in the last few years, they have played back-to-back games. So one game starts at six, it's over seven fifteen, the other game starts at seven fifteen and goes till eight thirty. They're unable to do that, because the problem created with the maximum group of fifty people is, you have two teams there with some kids, spouses, siblings, and all that stuff watching. And the power to through, the other two, the other two teams arrive to get ready, and also to watch to see how the game ended. All of a sudden, you get fourteen, so about twenty people on each team, all bringing the kids and the family members. It, uh, it wasn't gonna happen. So, Castalia this year is gonna be a necessity. In order for them to be able to get their games in during the week, and also be able to give priority to the modern baseball. So right now, modern baseball, just as like this year modern hockey, they get, they get the juke first. They won't have the field for five days a week, softball, they have to figure out how to get court around it. So what we're gonna do is, in order to get everybody to what they need, Castalia will have to be fixed up. While we talk to Desmond, some of you may have rolled on, seen some improvements to the field thus far. Just to, uh, get the grass and all the bigger rocks, so take infield mix-up, put that down to get that the best we can, we can get it for this year, just to give us the extra field space to get all the user groups all the time. Modern baseball, uh, it's work with them, theirs is gonna be a little more difficult to get the plan in place, but certainly not possible. The good thing is, with base, with, with our modern baseball, I told them today, Big Urban has already done that document for them. All they need to do is just take that and, uh, cook and cut it to, to fit their needs here locally. So that's, that'll be a little bit of a working process for them. Right now, they're not looking to stare it up probably until the tracks come out, and sometimes I really do a lot before they get organized, so... We've opened the door to the arena. Trish told, approached us, and, uh, in dire need of a place to be able to operate your yoga center. COVID has restrained her from being able to use her current facility. So I met with Trish, and we went over, uh, the situation, and over the fact that we have that appointment in place. It's outside the regular season, so no one's vacuuming the arena, they're out there, how we're cleaning, no one's... So in order for her to do that, she would even have to be responsible for disinfecting after every time that they come in. If they touched the ground, they're gonna, they're gonna clean, they use the washroom, but she's gotta be completely disinfected. She was completely okay with that. And I have no doubt that, uh, whatever we come up with, will get done exactly what they said we'd get done. But she's working at doing a couple nights a week, or just using the mess room. It gets her six or eight people that she needs to get the social distancing in, from the space that we have available. We're through today, we've got the signs posted, sanitizer, really worth to have, and then from that point, her plan will take over, range is long before we're cleaning and sanitizing. The fitness center, the fitness center, right with ball fields, the green light, it's Friday, so we've had some people reach out and vote the fitness center. Again, it's a little bit of a unique situation where we have the shared facility with the Boys and Girls Clubs, and we're trying to think of a way to be able to operate that without bothering, uh, the Boys and Girls Club. And I think we've come up with a pretty good plan. The plan will require us to hire a student for the summer, which we've already applied for the campus summer jobs, uh, we initially maybe had applied for the BIC for a couple positions, and then recently have gone back and said that the BIC's not opening. We have a few positions that we're gonna open up, we switched over, and so they're currently in the works. We can only get two for them, and one or two for the rec and pool. So we don't see that as being an issue. The big thing is, is only being able to operate during regular hours, nine-five, E three, four-three, whatever kind we come up with. The biggest thing is, it'll have to be by appointment only. Each appointment will be one hour length, and during that hour, you'll only get fifteen minutes to go and do your workout. The other ten minutes will give that staff member time to go in and completely disinfect everything that, that they've touched. But the users are also required to disinfect anything, so we're all only doing it twice, to make sure things are being done. And also, during that last ten minutes, it gives an opportunity for the person that's in there to get out, to give them time to clean before anyone else comes in. So the next scheduled appointment that comes in, let's say, one appointment's in there at ten, if they're at ten fifty, next appointment's at eleven o'clock, that person will come, arrive, and sit up in their vehicle until their appointment starts, and then the staff member will go and back in the commission once everything is good to go. They'll certainly have restricted access to the building, which means we will call them in directly into the fitness center. They will not have access to the washrooms or change rooms, because those rooms are shared space with the Boys and Girls Club. So, we've made sure that everyone knows that these are available and the plan is called. But, in case of emergency, if that happened to happen, and someone did have to go, it's just a matter of getting in contact with authority, if someone can disinfect, let the work, work group know that someone's been in there, get disinfected before they clean. Still working to get the oval courts up and going, we've had several conversations with, with Desmond about paving. Everything's ready after the winter, they just have to back up, take some shots with their trains, and make sure everything's leveled, and just not just re-rave in and say, or get the paving in. My biggest concern is, here we are, already in the first week of June, we have a very short season, and we're dumping a substantial amount of money in these oval courts. We'd like to be able to get as much time this year as we possibly can. The last thing on the list is Canada Day. Office staff have talked, we've gone back and forth, had conversations with the Deputy Mayor, because, uh, still go back to church and all, we've done the breakfast. We're just asking, hey, I think, how do we do this? Can we do takeout at the, at the breakfast? Can we, uh, is there anywhere we can do things in smaller segments? But I think at the end of the day, I think we finally realized that we're trying to hold on to something that probably just not gonna happen again. Nothing that we do during Canada Day is small groups, pancake breakfast is two or two-fifty. Recent poll was, the whole entire club is crowded with people, the beach is clustered with people. There was a thing going on on Facebook about, you know, whether or not we're doing the fireworks, it wouldn't be possible for the village to do one for Canada Day. We looked at that, we actually were looking at that before the polls come out, and at the end of the day, there's just no way possible that the village could responsibly say, we put that stuff on, because you know there's gonna be a crowd here, the fifty people, across from post office piece of the Washington fireworks, they're not gonna stay in the car if you ask them to. So at the end of the day, we finally, as much as we hated to, we come to the realization that there's, there's just no way we can do it. Bearing that, that's, uh, that's all I have. I would, though, be interested just to see people's opinions on the disinfecting of the playgrounds. And I'll tell you where this is coming from. I think, I think the provincial government is using these situations, these groups of fishy, not disinfecting the playground, it's more as guinea pigs to try to find out what's gonna, what's gonna happen in September if they open school. If they open school, might the kids go to the playground? Did a, did a, uh, COVID outbreak arise from a player? If it did, we know we can open later. Did something come from, from a gathering of fifty people at the ball, if it did, maybe we're gonna reduce the class sizes. So all this about taking place, I think, is, is leading up towards that, but, uh, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to, we have to follow it. We, we can do whatever we feel best suits our, our situation.
So what is it possible to disinfect the playground, all three of the playgrounds? Like, what is that working, what's talking, I guess that's what I'm trying to ask. Whether it's once or twice, because I'm, I'm also concerned about the liability piece of it, I mean, nobody wants anybody to get sick. But if we aren't disinfecting, even if it's not a recommendation, there is always that potential.
I think the potential for liability wouldn't be that great, because we have the recommendation from the provincial government saying that they no one requires to. And we've also posted the signs, any part saying, these facilities are not sanitized, use it at your own risk. I know waiving liability is probably not as easy as it seems, but those are the kind of steps that we've, that we've taken. Time to do that stuff, we haven't done it yet, that's why we just maintain that the Castalia one, because it's small, it's only a half a dozen pieces of equipment. The contact tons of the disinfectant to work, for us to sit there and wait, to make sure it's done properly, the contact ton, but, uh, so no kids come along and slide in, slide in, get their, so, met with fresh jabberds is, is almost the biggest concern. Grand Harbor, we had, have a lot of pieces of equipment, a lot. And we started disinfecting Castalia, uh, went around everywhere, they laughed on the new jabberds, and they did fisheries, and got the last bottle. And so, supplies like that are becoming harder and harder to get. Not saying they're impossible to get, they are getting more and more hard to get, so... No saying that that should have the decision based on the lack of, not being able to get the supplies, I mean, I'm sure we can get the supplies, if that's what we want to do, absolutely.
So does it make any sense to even rate points on the, you know, once we've emptied, and it's like you said, Kurt comes along, and they're not gonna want to take a deal, or?
Without the argument, is there any either way?
Either.
One argument is that exact argument. Fifty minutes after you've done it, someone comes along, coughs, sneezes, and all that, it's infected. That, either way, is, at least we know it's been done once a day. What happens to that from the time you go till the next day, when you're forever in that building, is, is a good question. But the emphasis on that, on this, what the sign says, says that we're requiring, are requiring, it's suggested that, that the parents bring their own sanitizer in place.
I don't, I don't like the idea of being closed down or something, I don't think.
Absolutely not. Absolutely not, so the question is, to open it, post the signs that says, use your own rest, not sanitize, or open it, and we will get around to it at least once a day.
Personally, I'd say open it and put the signs up. I don't think there's any need to disinfecting the kids' stuff. Personally, I mean, if my granddaughters were playing up there, I wouldn't be concerned. They took them to the park or whatever. And there's also that same truth, the kids need to be in the dirt. So, uh, personally, I wouldn't have a problem with just putting the signs up, saying that it's not disinfected. Just my two cents worth.
I think that's the way to go.
I think the emphasis on the problems is open them and repair them.
Yeah.
And, but as Chris said, if that's the case, it's just an experiment, but that's the way it's got to be, or that's the way they're, look at it, that if you're gonna take your kids there, uh, this is what it is, there's no sanitizer. If you want them to play, go, or you bring your own stuff to the, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I, this, this decorator's touched on about, uh, signing in on using facilities. Uh, he asked me to mention that to Dr. Kevin Velasquez on a conference call, it was required, and I, he said, no! But I really liked the idea, so it's fair, very innovative, and that, so, uh, anyway, he was the decorator, and he come up with that suggestion. Because he said, Campbell, we're sure, we're showing that, uh, Tom Fordman is a key track of trace of everything. Uh, just a suggestion, I know that sand sites do have a water proof book or whatever, so maybe people could sign in, so they have an idea, it's there, you know? So, just a suggestion, that's all.
Yeah. But it had been a challenge getting feedback from EMO and the, the group that they have in placement problems, the, the interpretation unit, I guess is the proper name for them. Like, the first thing that come up the other day, when they said we could open ball fields, maximum fifty people. So my course, I, uh, sent an email out to, uh, our local EMO, asking, Victoria Park, Victoria Park has a ball field, it has a playground, and it has tennis slash football courts. Is that entire park classified as one facility and one hundred and fifty people? Or, does the ball field be fifty, does the playground be fifty, and does the tennis court be fifty? The first question was, what's the separation? Well, there's quick separation between the, the ball field, playground, and tennis court. He said, we're going to the playground and the ball field, so we may have kids that are gonna run back and forth, they're gonna come to women's ball, the washing, do the softball, they're gonna stay for five minutes, go to the playground for half an hour, back over for five minutes. He said, there's your answer. He said, it's not, I've to ask to be able to tell you, to dictate to you which one you can, you guys are gonna have to make those, those decisions. So, it's been, it's been a bit of a challenge, getting, getting answers.
Well, thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
We're able to pay the following invoices from the General operating fund, Gable Canada, lighting for complex, one thousand five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Dutchman contracting, Mark and Stanley Beach, two thousand and seventy dollars. McMac Fire Safety, SCBA Performance Desk, one thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-six cents.
Mr. Mayor, I agree that we, there was, it was a permission from the General Operating Fund.
We heard the motion by Councilor Cheney, do we have a second here?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Morse. Question?
Just wondering if they agree with our Canada lighting for the complex, if that'd be more, you're, you're saying, okay? Thank you.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Transfer from the General Operating Fund to the Gas Tax Fund, motion to transfer thirty-seven thousand and ninety-nine dollars from the General, General Operating Fund to the Gas Tax.
Transfer from the General Operating Fund to the Gas Tax Fund, motion to transfer thirty-seven thousand and ninety-nine dollars from the General Operating Fund to the Gas Tax Fund.
That's money that was put in our general operating account from RDC for the pepa ball boards, we sent to transfer back into our gas tax. Let's just transfer.
I would so move.
Heard the motion by Councilor Morse, do we have a seconder?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Chaney, question? Always in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now we go into closed session for the bursaries, personnel, and trash tender.
I would move to adjourn to closed session.
What's that, Mr. Mayor? Question? Always in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Don't roll to my rack, be, you know, back in session. After being imposed session, and we, the GMC bursaries, the council accepted a recommendation from the Bursary Committee, and it will be made public in a few days. Okay? The person out?
I would move that we do a complete review of personnel salaries in coming into the 2021 budget season.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor, and the reason there is, the Personnel Committee is pretty well on it. So we want to see if we can get a handle on it.
Yep.
So you heard the motion, do we have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Sturgeon, question? Always in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And then financial, it's the trash tender, and we're going to put that up for a...
I say, I would move that we extend the bidding to the trash tender for another three weeks.
Here is the motion by Councilor Morse, do we have a seconder for that?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Sturgeon, question? Always in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. It, the meeting went well for our first one with the conditions that we had to be under, the six-foot distancing and the number of counselors we had. And we want to thank Ed, Sophie, Garrett, for doing the usual. And one other comment that I would just like to make, and this is a personal view of mine, is I think that the premier is doing a great job with COVID-19. I get a little worked up sometimes on some of the things that we have to do, and I forget once in a while. But we're seeing the results of his work in the ball party committee, of how well Munchwick is doing, et cetera, that can't wait to think. So we're good, I'm looking for Councilor Morse.
Move to the bench.
Heard the motion, seconded by Deputy Mayor Sturgeon, good night, people.